This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. I'm at 7:30, June 30th, 2020. This is the June 30th, 2020 special work session of the Allen Dell Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who's joining via video or telephone conference. We ask that you please mute your devices at this time so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be several opportunities for the public to be heard tonight, and we'll advise you at the appropriate times. There's three, three times where we will ask if there's for public comment. So hopefully, everyone can hear.
I'm good, Ari. Thank you.
Amy, Liz, Steve?
Yeah.
Okay, everyone's good.
Yes.
Good. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meeting Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by Resolution 20-159 on June 17th, 2020, and the June 26th, 2020 sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
Great. Thank you very much, Michelle. Please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Homan? Here. Councilman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Sasso?
Here.
Councilman Stroch?
Here.
Councilwoman Wosinski?
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein?
Here. Thank you very much, Michelle. All right, so this is the first of three times that we opened the meeting for public comment. So anyone from the public wishing to speak, please state your name and address for the record. You'll have a five-minute time period to address the governing body. So there may be some people out there. I know there are some people out there. I just won't be able to tell whether or not you want to speak. Now would be the appropriate time. Okay, so not hearing anyone or seeing anyone via video, we'll close the meeting to the public for the first time. Administration will move on to the administration part of the work session. We'll start with the agenda review. Minutes of previous meetings are being voted on. Minutes of the May 14th regular session, May 28th work and regular session, and June 11th work and regular session, and June 17th special regular session are all listed for approval. So, Michelle, there's a lot on here, and thank you for all the hard work. The only meeting that's not on is which one?
Both the May 28th work session and regular session. They'll be on for the next meeting.
Great. And so for all these, thank you. I appreciate it. I went through them, and they all look good to me. Anyone else on the council have any comments on them? Okay. Next is the adoption, and to know everyone was in attendance for all those meetings. The attendance has been wonderful, so everyone will be eligible to vote when that comes up on, for approval. Next is adoption of ordinance. Adoption of ordinance 20-11. Ordinance of the Borough of Allen Dell, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, amending the redevelopment plan for certain properties situated along West Crescent Avenue. Attorney Ray Wiss, would you like to speak to that?
Sure. This, this was the ordinance that was introduced at our last meeting as a result of some discussions with and renegotiation in light of the, the changed economic conditions with the would-be purchaser of the property. The original redevelopment plan that was adopted by the borough was amended. After the introduction of the ordinance at your last meeting, it was referred to the Land Use Committee. The Land Use Committee has since reviewed it and found the modifications or the amendments to be consistent with the master plan. The borough has received a letter affirming that that's a fact. And, and just to highlight again, the differences between the, the original and the amended is that the number of units, residential units that were originally called for in the initial redevelopment plan were 60. That number, as a result of subsequent negotiation, has been increased to 70 units. So that is, that's one of the main modifications. The use of the back property is an either-or use of either a warehouse facility or a storage facility. So those are the modifications that are being contemplated. Other than that, the, there really is no change in the underlying zoning that existed, which is why the Land Use Committee found that it was, it was consistent as it had done with the original redevelopment plan. I, I was asked to highlight, so let me do that, the fact that there, there was a, a use of a term in the original plan, which, which may have caused a little bit of confusion when it was provided to us by the redevelopment expert for the borough. There was a term used that was said non-market units. And that was used as, as really a hybrid term to describe both age-restricted units and affordable units. So the combination of those two, those two types of units were deemed in the original plan to be non-market. In actuality, at all times, the age-restricted units were going to be market-priced. They would just have come with an age restriction. But subsequent legal research has indicated that under the Fair Housing Act, the Federal Fair Housing Act, to have age restrictions in this type of a development is prohibited by law. So the clarity that's afforded by the amendment is to delete that term of non-market units. And the remaining six residential COA units or affordable housing units are the same six units that were always proposed from the inception date. And the three below-market first responder units are likewise the units that were always proposed from the first inception date. So long way around, but hopefully that lends some clarity to what's being done.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Next on the agenda review is our consent agenda with 13 resolutions. So first is the bill list. I reviewed it. Councilman O'Toole, Chair of Finan-
Yep.
Great. Amy?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much. The next 320, 161, 162, and 163. We can read those somewhat together. Those three resolutions continue our participation in the Bergen County Community Development Program from which we receive grant funds, most recently for the installation of ADA accessible bathrooms at the Red Barn. Resolution 20-161 appoints our fiscal representatives and alternates for the coming fiscal year. Resolution 20-162 renews our participation in the program through fiscal year 2023. And Resolution 20-163 authorizes the execution of a continuing agreement with the County of Bergen. The next three items on the consent agenda, 20-164, 165, and 166, all have to do with Crestwood. So we're, together, we can discuss them. Resolution 164 authorize, authorize the hiring of staff. Resolution 165 authorizes adjustments in the membership fees for financial hardship reasons. And Resolution 166 authorizes refunds to members who overpaid due to a glitch in the system.
And I'd like to actually just thank Michelle for all her hard work. There was many, many refunds that were, had to be dealt with. So thanks for her to get that all cleaned up because there, the, the system did actually have a glitch on our last day of the early special rates.
Agreed. Yeah, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
The next five can be read together, or at least we can discuss them together. 167, 168, 169, 170, and 171. So the five resolutions satisfy the requirements of the borough's affordable housing obligation. Ray, I understand the Borough Council that we're going to make a motion to remove 168 from the consent agenda.
Yeah, when the consent agenda is voted on at the, the regular meeting, we'll need a motion to remove 168 from the consent agenda-
Right.
-and to handle it separately. Once that is accomplished, then we'll need a motion to amend Resolution 168. I, I believe that there should be an added provision there that actually is the authorization to pay, which is not included. So when that motion is, to amend is made, I'll read the additional point, which would be point number four in that resolution, which would read, "The borough hereby authorizes the mayor, the chief financial officer, the borough clerk, and the borough attorney to take all necessary steps to implement this resolution, including payment of the $30,000 upon receipt of certification of funds." So it is actually the authorization of the payment, not just the intent to pay.
Right.
And then once that motion to amend is approved, and assuming it is approved, then we would need to have a motion to approve the resolution as amended. So, so that, that process will start with a motion to remove 168 from the consent agenda.
Okay, good. And do you want, and is there anything else that we need to say regarding those five?
I can just very, very briefly. We previously reported on multiple occasions that Allen Dell reached a very favorable settlement in the litigation that was instituted by the Fair Share Housing Council with respect to our low and moderate income housing obligation. In fact, the reference that I just made to the units at 220, 230, the six affordable units are a part of that, that resolution. Our planner, our COA planner, is obligated to submit a midpoint report as of July 1, which is showing that the borough is fulfilling those steps required in our settlement agreement and the judgment proposed that we received from the court. 167 is the authorization and approval of the spending plan consistent with that, that settlement. 168, as I just said, is the expression of intent to a fund, to fund, which will be supplemented with the authorization to fund. 169 is part of the settlement, requires that there be a very low-income three-bedroom unit. 169 is accomplishing that at 221 East Crescent Avenue. 22170 is to execute a deed restriction for 223 East Crescent Avenue, which basically means that the low and moderate income restrictions, the affordable housing restrictions, run with the property and will be recorded as such. And 20-171 essentially does the same thing for 221 East Crescent.
Great. Thank you very much.
I, I just would like to thank you, Ray, for keeping that all together. As you can see, this whole fair share housing process is extremely complicated. Allen Dell is in really good shape compared to, you know, a lot of other towns who have not met their obligations and their compliance for all the years. Some of them are already getting lawsuits filed against them, like Engle of Cliffs and Montvale. Other towns are saddled with hundreds and hundreds of condos. So starting with Vince Barrack, continuing, you know, with Mayor Emeritus, Liz White, we've always been in the forefront of meeting our obligations with, with COA, which is now called Fair Share Housing. So it's a lot of work, and Ray, you've done a great job keeping all the outliers together for us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next, last on the consent agenda, 20-172, authorize repurpose grant contract. 2018 Bergen County Open Space Trust Funds Municipal Park Improvement Program Crestwood Lake Playground Improvements. The County of Bergen has approved our application to repurpose our 2018 open space grant and use it towards Crestwood Lake Playground improvements. This resolution authorizes Ron Kistner to sign the contract. Okay, so we do have some time for some committee reports. Councilman O'Connell, would you like to give your report?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you very much. I'll be quick. Just on the Junior Police Academy is going to happen this summer. It starts on Monday. They worked it out where they could keep, uh, social distance and still have the police academy, so that's exciting. And we're setting up OEM monthly meetings now, and we're going to have a public safety meeting. It's tentative for July 14th right now, depending on Chief Sherb's recovery. And that's about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilman O'Connell. Appreciate all your service. Councilman Sasso, would you like to give your report?
Yes, thank you. The Land Use Committee has not met since our last meeting, so there's no report there. However, Councilwoman Wosinski and I have been communicating, as I've mentioned before, with the Northern Highlands High School intern program. And we have at least one candidate who is willing to start as soon as possible. The resume of that candidate is available for anybody that wants to see it. And I spoke to Michelle, our clerk, yesterday, and she feels that she has plenty of things to keep somebody busy, and I'm sure some of the other departments and other committees that, and I've mentioned this before, could also get this individual, you know, busy and involved. So we're hoping that we can do something.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Homan?
Hi. Yes. So, um, I think everybody knows that we're hoping for some rain. Everybody should have received a reverse 911 call as well as emails if they are signed up for either the swift reach or the constant contact. And anybody that is not signed up for that, I would definitely encourage residents to make sure they go to our website and sign up for constant contact. But we have moved into the Phase Two water restrictions as of Saturday, June 27. And I really do implore residents to, you know, to do the best they can to conserve water, to make sure that their sprinkler systems are set appropriately, meaning that even house numbers would be Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday, and odd house numbers would be Wednesday, Friday, and Sunday. And those in-ground sprinklers would only go from 12:00 a.m., 12:00 midnight, to 4:00 a.m. only. And that then you could use hose-supplied lawn sprinklers from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m., because obviously you're not going to get up at midnight to take those out, as well, 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning, as well as 7:00 to 9:00 at night. Monday is a system recharge day, and the reason for that, and I feel like it is so important to explain, is because, you know, we have five wells, but they can't be running constantly. Just the wear and tear on the wells, as well as we do have monthly limits as to the amount of water that we actually can pull from the aquifers. So having some time for the wells to recharge, as well as we have an interconnect with Suez and a bulk water purchase that allows us to bring in water from Suez. But having that time to let the wells recharge is really important. I am hoping that we will get some rain in the near future. But if we do not, I did want to also just, you know, give people the perspective that if we do not, we probably will go into Phase Three water restrictions, which would actually add two additional recharge days to the, to our program. So meaning that then we would go to automatic sprinkler systems only being run instead of three days a week for every resident to two days a week. But at this point, we are still on Phase Two, and hopefully, you know, we won't have to progress. But I do want to make sure it's not something that Allen Dell is doing wrong. It's not something that Suez is doing wrong. It's Mother Nature, and, you know, we have five wells, and we buy water from Suez. And so we all need to work together to make sure that, you know, we treat this resource wisely and carefully. And, you know, you can water, but it's just doing it at the appropriate time so that that way, you know, our wells can recharge. So that's, if anybody has any questions, please, please call me, email me. I'm great with email for the most part, so I'm happy to address them. Additionally, we are talking with Suez about a number of things to try to continue to improve our meter reading, seeing whether or not there's options to be able to see if, you know, aberrant readings for a resident could possibly indicate a leak. So we're just trying to, you know, we're always trying to work forward on this committee to, you know, provide quality water, but also provide quality service. And we're looking ahead, you know, as, as I've talked about with the PFOS feasibility study. And it's really, it's a great team. So if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Wosinski?
Sure. 220, 230 is ongoing. We have our weekly meetings. Actually, today was a weekly meeting, or half an hour meeting usually extends. I think today it was two plus hours, and then additional meetings with our engineers after. So it was a busy day, but we did get a lot done. As you see, the redevelopment amendment was on the agenda tonight. We are all very pleased that despite the market conditions that we got to work with this developer and keep this development alive and in place despite everything that's going on. Crestwood Lake, you know, as you know, it was a real big decision to open the lake. I have to really hand it to Tom Viscardi, our lake director. He really did a, really a bang-up job making sure the lake was safe for everybody. Did this wonderful social distancing plan. It was approved by the county. It was approved by our OEM. People have been fabulous. They are just so grateful that we opened the lake, that we're able to offer this to our residents. It was a bit of a leap of faith, like I said. We weren't sure what was going to happen because, you know, we had to prepare well in advance. And it turns out that it was the right decision. We are actually doing great in revenue. We were concerned. That was another one of the concerns. We weren't sure how many people were going to join, but I have to say that exceeded our expectations. So we are, we are doing great. We supplemented our revenue with some apparel sales this year, with some towel sales this year, which are also doing well. And we also rented out some fields. So we are in great shape. Playgrounds are opening on the second, so I know there's going to be a lot of happy people about that. Our baseball and our soccer have already started. They have all submitted social distancing guidelines, which have been approved by our OEM. So they are going to be, they actually have started. And I think that's, I think that's it for me.
Great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. This is going to be quick. The committee has not met since our last council meeting, but we've been busy behind the scenes with some personnel issues and keeping an eye on expenses. The finance committee is thrilled with everything going on at Crestwood. It's fantastic. It was the right move, and everybody appreciates it. I've been there twice already. And our next scheduled committee meeting is next Thursday, the 9th of July.
Great. Thank you, man. Councilman Stroch?
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mayor Bernstein. Okay, DPW report. I, I continue to be impressed by the DPW. Ron Kistner, all the office staff, as well as the guys in the field, you know, who are keeping the town running. And the most recent little twist that they've had to deal with is that with the coming 4th of July occurring on the weekend, the recycling center in Mulberry will be open tomorrow, which is Wednesday, as well as Thursday, and will be closed Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. A, a update was sent out via email, so hopefully everybody's aware of that and won't be disappointed if they try to go there on either Saturday, Friday, or Sunday. But the ability for the DPW staff to continue to pivot to the changing needs of the vacation calendars and the needs of the residents as they continue to clean up the backlog of spring cleaning. It's a small thing, but it helps people feel better when their yards are in good shape. So I want to thank Ron Kistner, the office staff, and the, the field staff of the DPW again. I cannot say enough good things about them. This past Saturday, Allen Dell had its second closing downtown for the restaurants to have the full rain of the downtown street. And it was done wonderfully again. I want to thank Lane Simon and John Pasquino for taking care of the DPW side of the event. I want to thank Rich McDowell, which he happened to be working this Sunday when the Allen Dell Volunteer Goose Patrol was distributing the new 2020 vests for the dogs. And he stopped by to make sure that we had everything we needed and opened the bathrooms for us, and that was a big help. The distribution of the Goose Patrol vests went well. We're following the current COVID guidelines. This year, we had the volunteers stay in their cars. We asked that they all have masks on, even though they were staying in their cars. And we were able to do it in a very efficient and, I believe, safe manner. And most of the residents thanked us profusely for continuing to move forward, even under the current restrictions. Some people expressed some fatigue with the amount of emails that we were sending out. And hopefully, next year, when things get back to a little bit more normal, we won't be flooding our volunteers with so many emails. And we were also saddled with a complaint that was lodged against the Goose Patrol with both, the complaint was filed with the town, the police department, and the high school. So we had to deal with that in the middle of the vest distribution, and that just triggered some more emails going out, which I guess further overloads people who are on email overload. The, excuse me. The office staff at the Borough Hall continues to do a wonderful job, and I just want to give a shout out to them. The construction office, they issued another 87 construction permits last week. Forty-six compost permits were issued last week. Open records request, we had 13 more processed last week. And of course, dog licenses, I'm surprised that they haven't all been processed already. But I guess people are still coming in and asking for their 2020 dog license. So there were 10 of those issued this week. It's just a wonderful thing when, even with all these difficulties, the nuts and bolts of running our town is continuing to get done. And I want to thank everybody for their part of that. On, on Thursday of last week, Mark Savistano, who helped create the Recycling Advisory Committee with me, called me to let me know that his neighbor across the street had a large collection of styrofoam recycling. So together, we loaded up our cars, went to the recycling center in Haskell, which is about 12 miles and 20 minutes away from us. So I got to see the facility firsthand and, and see that it's a workable model if we could find a, a efficient way of getting Allen Dell's styrofoam recycling to there. To that end, because I'm checking the screen, and I see that Mark Savistano is not on. So I will steal a little bit of his thunder. He's working with some of the neighboring towns, Glen Rock being one of them, who already have a styrofoam recycling program in place. And by the next meeting, we'll have an update on what our hopes are for starting to get some of the styrofoam out of the trash landfill stream and into a recycling stream. The, the place in Haskell takes styrofoam and converts it back to-
I'm just, we have, we're reaching 8 o'clock, so I am not, I'm not cutting you short. I'm either, I'm going to cut you off, or I'm going to cut you short, one way or another. We just have to pick it up afterwards.
30 seconds. It, it's a viable place. They welcome all the styrofoam recycling that the people have been delivering, so I have high hopes. Thank you very much, Mayor Bernstein.
Great. Thank you. I'm sorry to cut you short. And we are going to be ending in a minute. I just do want to indicate to the public. In my mayor's report, I'm going to be discussing our COVID-19 cases and the increase that, that we got, that people saw. They reached out to me. They may have reached out to other council members. I do have a clarification of what that was. It was back from April. So I just, for those of you that are wondering whether we're going to speak to it, I am going to address it in my mayor's report. Okay, so with that said, I would, 8 o'clock, I would request a motion to adjourn the work session.
Go move to O'Connell.
Second, Amy.
Good. Ed and Amy, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Great. Thank you very much. Okay, everyone, welcome back. Now 8 o'clock. This is the June 30th, 2020 regular session of the Allen Dell Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining us via video and telephone conference. At this time, I ask the public to- At this time, I ask the public to please mute your devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be two opportunities during this meeting for the public to speak, and we will advise you as to the appropriate times. Michelle, if you could please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by Resolution 20-159 on June 17, 2020, and the June 26, 2020 sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
Great, thank you, Michelle. If we can all please rise to salute the flag.
The flag of the United States of America. The true republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, if you please, can conduct the roll call.
Sure, Councilwoman Holman. Here. Councilwoman O'Connell.
Here.
Councilwoman O'Toole.
Here.
Councilwoman Sasso.
Here.
Councilwoman Strouch.
Here.
Councilwoman Wosinski.
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein.
Here, thank you very much. So as I indicated in the work session, we are going to approve the minutes from May 14, 2020 regular session, May 28.
No, no, those, those both have been removed. Sorry.
Okay.
May 14 regular session, June 11 work and regular sessions, and June 17 special regular.
So not May 28.
Correct.
Okay, so we are going to approve, as we discussed in the work session, minutes from the following meetings, May 14 regular session, June 11 work and regular session.
Yeah.
June 17 special regular session.
Yes.
Great, I would request a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved, Strouch.
Great, thank you. Second?
O'Toole.
Okay, Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman.
Yes.
Councilwoman O'Connell.
Yep.
Councilwoman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sasso.
Yes.
Councilwoman Strouch.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wosinski.
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. And now we are opening the meeting to the public for the second of three times. So this is on agenda items only. So if there's anyone who wishes to be heard to address agenda items, now with the time to make yourself known. So now I see a couple of boxes of empty squares, and I see some other residents. So anyone? Not seeing anyone?
Wait, I think, I think somebody's, I think there's a couple.
Is that you, Kristin?
Yeah, I think it is. I think Erica wanted to go first.
Okay, so Erica, please state an address. And Erica, I'm just, just state your name and address, and then I have a quick question for you.
My name is Erica Allenberg, and I live on 100 Midwood Avenue.
Okay, great. And it's open to you. I just, I wasn't sure. There were people who I couldn't see. I don't know if you were here for the work session that started at 7:30.
I was not there for the work session.
Okay, and so you may have addressed, but I don't mean that to stop you from your question. So go ahead, the floor is yours.
Okay, first, I'd like to start off by saying I wanted to thank the mayor and council and acknowledge, you know, the challenges and all the hard work that you've put into the sale of 220 and 230 Crescent Avenue. And I really valued being part of the Vision Committee and. But I also know that we haven't met in a while. And, you know, I read through what was going on in the ordinance, and I had some questions that I wanted to ask. The first one was in relation to section number four. And I was wondering about the possibility of whether it's been discussed about if the redevelopment, the proposal for the redevelopment is changing so much, is there a possibility that we could find someone else and work with another corporation or group for redevelopment that might meet some of the original needs that we had proposed? I could see that a lot of the affordable housing has been cut from 29 units to nine. And also, as you all know from the Vision Committee.
And Erica, and I, not, nothing I'm saying, it's not chastising. So, but I want to be informative. So the Borough Attorney Ray Wiss spoke to what the changes were, and it would be helpful. So I don't know whether you want to go with your questions, and then Borough Attorney can say it again. But some of those things we had addressed during the work session.
Yeah, I apologize. I thought at the meeting for this ordinance started at 8 o'clock today.
That's okay.
I apologize for not having.
Right, it just, some of the numbers that you have are not correct. So we like, we want to clarify, and this is, we're trying to do it.
Yeah, no, that's why I'm asking the questions. I really would like to understand because, as you know, you know, the senior citizens and developing an age-friendly community here in Allendale and helping the, that population was something that I really was wed to and advocated for when I was part of the Vision Committee. So I understand that, from what I read, that there will be no senior housing. So I don't know if I'm mistaken with that, but that, my understanding is that was taken out of the plan. And then also, my understanding was that there'll be 70 units now, as opposed to what we had originally discussed. So I was, you know, feeling that that was a significant increase and that we will have a significant amount of traffic in the mornings, especially with the trucks. And I was wondering about, you know, what the traffic study has shown in terms of the impact that that might have on Crescent Avenue and, you know, people coming in and out if we have families living in 70 units. And again, I thought that the senior housing for that would cut down on having people in the schools and, you know, really help some of the senior population that wants to stay here in Allendale. So those are my questions at this point in time.
Okay, and we can go through it. And so, I mean, by one, the traffic study, that would be discussed and presented during the application to the Land Use Board. That's not, this is not the time for that. And this, nor would this be the time to discuss the impact of traffic. And that would be when it's, the application is presented to the Land Use Board. Earlier, you had discussed to a change in the affordable housing numbers, which I don't think was correct. Ray, were you taking, were you jotting that down?
Yeah, let me see if I can go over some of the points I think that were made. Is the, the plan from the inception always included only six affordable units? Those six are still provided. There are three additional units that are designated as first responder units that are also within the parameters of being affordable units, even though they are not at this juncture part of our compliance plan for affordable housing. At a later date, they may be subject to conversion and may be available for the borough. As everyone knows, every 25 years, the, the plan is renewed. So we'll be subject to scrutiny, I think it's 15 years from now again. But, but at all times, to address the affordable unit aspect of the question, there were always six affordable units proposed. There remain six affordable units. The comment about the age restriction was a correct one.
Right.
Whereas before, there were 20 age-restricted units. That was the hope and the contemplation of the borough when this plan was first put together. As it turns out, under the Federal Fair Housing Act, you cannot have an integrated project of this sort with age-restricted and non-age-restricted units. It's prohibited by law. In fact, the age restriction is deemed discriminatory on an age basis. So as a matter of law, despite the borough's desire, and I think the community's desire, to have had those as age-restricted units, we were not allowed as a matter of law. So the comment that those have been deleted is a correct one, but that's the reason why we're not allowed.
The irony of that, right?
And then the, the comment about the 70 units as opposed to the 60 units in the original plan, that is also a correct comment that was made. And that was the, the real essence of the negotiation. Obviously, in light of markedly changed economic conditions, and I think that in part has led the borough to the conclusion that the deal on the table and the economics on the table are not going to be matched in the marketplace.
Right.
The trade, if you will, was to increase the number of units in the residential component of the project from 70 to 60. So in my earlier comments, I underscored the fact that that was, in fact, the most significant change. And Mayor, as you indicated, to the extent that either 60 or 70 are or are not impactful on traffic matters.
Right.
That will be the subject of, I'm sure, traffic expert testimony at the time that the entire project is before the Land Use Board for consideration.
Right, this is just amending the redevelopment plan. This is not the application. This is not the time where the traffic study has been vetted and approved and discussed and presented to the, to the borough.
Correct.
Okay, good.
And I'd like to actually comment on, on your point about the trucks. So we do have an ordinance in place that does protect that. So the warehouse in the back, it's, it's going to be divided up into three separate tenants, most likely. And we have restricted hours, and we have restricted use of tractor trailers. And we made a point that we don't have freight forwarding type of trucking. So that would be trucks kind of coming in and out like a last mile distribution center. And we made sure that our ordinance was intact for like cross, it's called cross dock, something or other. Cross dock, which, which basically is, it's really for the same thing. So it's for trucks coming in, unloading their merchandise to another truck, and then heading back out again. So we were very, very cognizant of that. As Ray explained, the senior housing, we, we really was out of our control. This fair share ordinance came, and we had to hire an additional attorney to look into that. And it really was unfortunate that we couldn't keep those age-restricted units. So that was something that we, you know, we struggled through. But as far as also the developer, we really were thrilled that we could keep this deal in place. Like, we really, we don't know what's out there. And this developer has a reputable, very reputable name. We've been working with them very, very closely. We trust them. There's definitely been concessions that they've given us. We've given them some as well, but it's definitely been a working relationship. So we do feel comfortable with the developer that we are using. You can look them up also, but there's a lot of other, you know, not so maybe desirable developers out there, and we just didn't want to take that risk. So it was a business decision that we thought was the right one for Allendale to keep this developer and, and work with them and work within the constraints of the deal.
Great, thank you. And Erica, Erica, I want to, if, I don't want to, anything that I say to not show my appreciation for you coming in. You had great questions. They were all detailed out. So I hope, I was just wondering whether I got the benefit of the earlier commentary. And I hope we were, we were responsive to your questions.
Yes, thank you.
Do you have any other questions?
Well, so Amy, I see a packed house here. So let's see if there's anyone else. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard? Hi, Kristin.
How are you guys? It's Kristin Smarnes, 74 Heights Road. I have a couple of questions. Some of them are on the same topic as Erica. But the first one, before I even get to that, is can you explain why there are no minutes of the meetings past the March Mayor and Council meeting? I was trying to educate myself to prepare for this meeting and understand about the 220 and 230, and there's nothing available. I don't know if I did something wrong, but I couldn't see anything.
No, no, you didn't do anything wrong. And tonight, what we did is we approved the minutes from May 14 regular session, May 28 work and regular session. No, I got it, I got it. You don't have to correct me, I got it just right.
He wants May.
June 11 work and regular session, and June 17 special and regular session. So until those minutes are typed up, sent out, and then, and then we all look at them, and we approve them, and then we vote on them. Until we do that, they're not put on, on the website. So we.
So were there no meetings at the end?
Is that we've been. Pardon?
Were there no meetings at the end of March or in April?
No, there were, but the minutes, we approved tonight. So now these minutes will go onto the website, and you'll be able to see them. There were meetings, and was the audio put up? Yeah, the audio was there the, the day after. But minutes, we need to approve, and we approve those minutes tonight. And we've been short-staffed.
If I may.
Yes, you may.
The minutes for the April meetings have been approved.
Right.
But there is additional preparation that is needed before they can go up on the website. And I am working on that. They will be up shortly.
Right.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm sorry if questions that I'm about to ask then could have been answered by looking at the minutes, but that's what it is.
That's okay.
So then the rest of my questions relate to 220 and 230. Can you just give us an overview of the timing that's expected for the rest of the deal? Because like Erica, I was a member of this Vision Committee back in 2018. In 2019, we heard that the Hampshire Builders was doing their due diligence and that the various elements of the agreements required were being negotiated. But I haven't heard a single thing since last year. And I'm a little surprised, honestly, that now all of a sudden, there's a closed-door meeting last month to discuss this, and now we have this new ordinance, which seems significantly changed. And I just, it's not that I doubt or don't trust what you've put in the, in the ordinance. I just was expecting greater communication. So I'd like to know what happened to the Vision Committee? What is the plan for you to communicate these changes to the town residents? I can see that there's a person who lives right across the street from 220 and 230. I could see that he is on this call. I'm, I'm sure he's wondering what's going to happen with the noise level when the trucks are running until 10 o'clock on a weeknight. You know, like, stuff like that, like, there, there could have been a lot more communication. So I'm a little disappointed.
Not interrupt the resident while, while she's speaking, but this portion of the meeting is on agenda items only. The third portion of the meeting would be open to any items, including an overall discussion of the project.
Okay.
But this is, this is on the specific action items for adoption this evening.
So Kristin, so what we would do is just to follow the appropriate order and rules that we are bound by, which, which we should. I would table your questions until the last time when we open the meeting to the public. I can assure you, because I sit right next to Amy, Councilwoman Wosinski has reported on the update of 220, 230. Every, the second and fourth, or the first and third Thursday, second and fourth Thursday of every month, over and over and over again. So nothing has been in the dark. She's, she's always talking about it, and seven days a week, she's working on it. So I will let her address that, your question later.
Great. And if we had the meetings, I think, the minutes for the meeting online, I think I would probably not be asking this question, but here we are.
Okay, I understand. Okay.
Thank you.
Sure, anyone else wish to be heard on agenda items? Okay. Not seeing anyone. We're closed to public on agenda items and ordinance for second reading and public hearing. Michelle, please read the title of the ordinance.
The following ordinance published here with was first read by Title Only on June 17, 2020, and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and borough website. Ordinance 20-11, an ordinance of the Borough of Allendale, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, amending the redevelopment plan for certain properties situated along West Crescent Avenue.
After the title is read, open the floor for public comment on ordinance 20-11. Any public comment on the ordinance? Not hearing or seeing any, I would request a council member to make a motion to move, move to pass and adopt on second final reading ordinance 20-11, the notice of same to be published according to law. Request.
So moved, Wosinski.
Would request a second.
Second, Holman.
Thank you, Councilwoman Holman. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O- Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Councilman Stroud?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wazinski?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. So next is the consent agenda. And as I discussed in the work session, I'm going to request a motion to remove 20-168 from the consent agenda.
So moved.
So moved, O'Connell.
Thank you. Uh, so Jim first, Ed O'Connell second. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then Ray, we do the motion afterwards. We'll do the motion to amend?
Sure. After, after we, uh, move on the consent agenda, we can do it separately.
Okay. So I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Some of.
So.
Great. Second?
Second.
Uh, Councilman Sasso. Uh, Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Here. Yes. I mean, yes.
Councilman. That's okay. Councilman O'Connell?
Ed, are you there?
He was.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Stroud?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wazinski?
Yes.
Great.
Ariyama, yes. I had some technical difficulties.
Great. So.
Thank you.
Um, Councilman O'Connell, so, um, uh, yes, on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Any unfinished business?
And I guess this qualifies as unfinished is, uh, we'll, we'll need a motion to amend Resolution 20-168, right, to add a fourth numbered paragraph to read, "The borough hereby authorizes the mayor, the chief financial officer, the borough clerk, and the borough attorney to take all necessary steps to implement this resolution, including payment of the $30,000 upon receipt of certification of funds."
Great. So, um, we need a motion to amend as follows.
To include the language I just.
To include the language that Attorney Ray Wiss just cited.
So moved. Holman.
Great. Thank you. Second?
O'Toole.
Thank you, Amy. Uh, um, roll call, please, Michelle?
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Stroud?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wazinski?
Yes.
Great. And now we need a motion to approve that, that, that resolution as amended.
Correct.
Okay. Any motion, please?
So moved. Stroud.
Great. Thank you, Jim. Second?
Second. Sasso.
Great. Thank you, Steve. Roll call, Michelle? No. Oh, yes, roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Stroud?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wazinski?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Um, in terms of committee reports, we went, uh, got to the committee reports and I'm going to give my mayor's report. And I, as I indicated, I'm going to.
Councilman Sasso.
Um, did, did you get all six?
I'm sorry. I believe so. Councilman Sasso?
I'm sorry. I didn't say anything.
Did, did you vote yes on the last, the last motion?
Yes. I'm sorry. Maybe it was on mute.
Okay. No, that's okay. We're all dealing with what we're dealing with. We got it.
Okay.
Okay. So without further ado, I'm going to move on to the mayor's report and I'm going to, uh, first, I'd like to speak to, um, the, the change in our numbers. Um, because I had, week after week, Friday after Friday, I touted how wonderfully Allendale had been doing. And we still, overall, we, we did and we're doing wonderfully. And, uh, the amount of, um, collective effort, we, we came together as, as a town, social distance. Um, but we did it together. On Friday, we were notified by the Bergen County Health Services that our, um, positive cases increased by 37, which was alarming to us, but in hindsight, now we understand why. It, this was something that happened in March and April. These were old numbers that were not tallied, that they didn't put into their numbers. Um, it's not a spike and it was not, it was no need for an alarm. Uh, a lab that was providing results did not properly enter the results and information into the statewide reporting system. So now that things have slowed down, Bergen County Health Services has been reconciling these cases to provide more accurate records. Uh, we're told by Bergen County that most, almost all of the 37 cases were from April during the peak, and that almost all were from our long-term care facilities. I spoke to Hansel Asnar for 30 minutes last Friday, and Michelle, I think you spoke to him equally, you know, where he, we went over. He just apologized. He said, look, it wasn't his doing, um, but that number came up. Uh, none of these are active cases and they're all from March, March and April. So, um, I hope that, uh, addresses your concerns. I'm sorry for, for the concern. Please rest assured that, um, Allendale OEM, we, uh, communicate daily. Uh, as Councilman O'Connell said, we were meeting weekly up until this last Wednesday, which was our last meeting for, I think, the next two weeks. And to the extent there is important information that needs to be disseminated, uh, that we will, uh, continue to do so. Going forward, Governor Murphy continues to open, reopen New Jersey, although he pulled back on the restaurants. June 15th, in adherence with the state guidelines, restaurants were allowed to open for outside, outdoor dining and non-essential business for in-person retail. Salons and barber shops followed on June 22nd. Um, on behalf of the entire Allendale community, I'm so happy to welcome our businesses back. I forget, maybe Jim spoke to, uh, the last two Saturdays, uh, which was wonderful. We have at least one more on July 11th. And then depending on, um, how we feel, we can accommodate and help the restaurants and the, the borough at large. We're going to look to do more of that. Uh, Tyler Yaccarino from the Chamber of Commerce and I participated in a ribbon cutting for Beats Fruit Juice on Sunday. Uh, we welcomed Jess Pyatt and her family. That's her third one. So we welcome her to the town. Governor has also announced further relaxation of restrictions on additional activities. Um, although with numbers spiking in other areas of the U.S., he recently delayed the reopening of in-person business at motor vehicles until July 7th. Plans to permit modified indoor dining have also been rescinded, as I mentioned. With face masks, certain restrictions and adherence to social distancing, the limit on indoor gatherings has increased to 100 people or 25% of the, the building's capacities, whichever is lower. Where outdoor gatherings has increased to 250 people, will further increase to 500 people on July 3rd. Uh, indoor retail shopping malls have been permitted to reopen as well. Uh, entertainment businesses such as movie theaters and arcades remain closed. July 2nd. Casinos still open for July 2nd?
Think so.
Right. Playgrounds, outdoor movement, amusement and water parks, museums, libraries, indoor recreational facilities can all reopen with limitations. As I think Amy may have spoken to, organized sports activities have been permitted to resume. And on July 6th, youth day camps and summer programs can operate. And modified outdoor graduation ceremonies can also begin on July 6th. Um, while the restrictions are easing, I want to remind everyone that social distancing guidelines are still in place and face coverings are still required. And I implore everyone to use the, to follow these protocols. It was great seeing everyone on the Saturdays and it's great seeing everyone out, but we, um, we just have to remember that the virus is out there and we need to, um, you know, we need to take the reasonable and necessary steps to make sure it doesn't spike back here. For Allendale, we're starting to resume, uh, businesses as normal or as usual, or as close to that as possible. We're recognizing and celebrating milestones like graduations, weddings and birthdays. Crestwood Lake, as Amy said, has been open to members and their guests for swimming through Labor Day. Uh, our fields are open by permit for certain organized sports programs and our basketball and tennis courts are also open. Uh, the celery farm is open during daylight hours for passive enjoyment. Recycling center is open to all residents. Our compost facility is open to all 2020 permit holders. And you can check the website, allenj.gov for dates and times. Borough's administrative offices are working as usual through the building, though the building still remains closed to the public. You can contact the particular office to make arrangements to conduct your business and contact information is on our website. Uh, Alioop? Amy, Ali, when, when is Alioop open?
They're actually starting on Monday.
Okay.
So Alioop's going to be using all of our fields, um, and, you know, throughout the areas and practicing social distance as well.
Okay. And the Crestwood Park Playground?
That's going to be open on the 7th.
Okay. Great. Uh, just a few reminders. Governor Murphy moved the primary election to July 7th with mostly vote by mail process. Primary ballots for registered Republicans and Democrats have been delivered. Unregistered voters have received a vote by mail application, which will need to be returned to receive the actual ballot. Contact the, uh, clerk's office with any questions. And lastly, um, as I always report, the census is underway, 2020 census. And our response is up to 77.6%. So we've been, we've been crawling that last 25%. Please take a couple of minutes. I've spoken in the past. I don't want to bore you with the details, but it's so imperative for you to put it in um, so that we get represented and that will also dictate what kind of money, um, we get. So please do so. And census workers will begin contacting those who have not responded around late July. So that's the end of my report. We'll go to committee, uh, professional reports. Right?
I think, Mayor, most of what we've been involved in since last meeting is been referred to in the 220, 230 report, uh, as well as the various items, particularly on the consent agenda. A lot of work went into the final aspects of the, uh, Affordable Housing Midterm Report, working with our, our consultant.
Good. Thank you. Michelle?
I have nothing to report at this time.
Thank, thank you for all that you've been doing.
Thank you.
You know, you've been doing a wonderful job. Appreciate it. Ron, anything to report?
Couple of things. The, uh, initial paving, big park, uh, package is being opened tomorrow. Uh, happy, I just still see the numbers. They were, bids were picked up by a number of contractors. So hopefully we get some good numbers and the paving will be started shortly in the municipality. Uh, county paving is still on hold. Uh, waiting for some state funds to be released. Um, the major elevator repair was made the elevator here at Borough Hall. I would say they completed it today, uh, just in time for the voting machines to be able to come upstairs because I was not sure how we're going to get those machines upstairs without the elevator. And there's going to be, I just awarded a bunch of repairs to a number of catch basins that, um, are in need of some rebuilding. So that will, Brett won't be getting it done shortly next week or so as well. Uh, in regards to the playground, uh, I, it is, it'll be open on Thursday, the 2nd. Tomorrow, we hope to get the machine from, uh, the fogger and we're going to spray all the, uh, playground equipment. So it's, no, it's sanitized ahead of time. As long as we can complete that, uh, we will try to open on Thursday. That's my report.
Thank you very much. And thank, I know it's been very, very busy and, uh, you've done a wonderful, wonderful job.
Well, in regards, real, real quick, I know there's a lot of people on hold. I, I just want to thank the acting clerk, uh, Michelle Ryan. Uh, there's questions, you know, I guess there's concerns about minutes. Uh, for the last three months, four months before a number of our employees came back, uh, it was basically Michelle and myself. Uh, Michelle was manning Borough Hall and I was down at DPW. So it was, her efforts were, uh, she made me look like a slacker. So I, I just want to publicly acknowledge Michelle and, uh, thank her for her efforts.
You know, and, and.
I agree.
Yeah.
I do too. Absolutely.
Yeah, we, um, the two of you, as seamless, as seamlessly as possible, when this happened, I know, of course, I was, you know, I, I was here. Um, what you did to keep the borough running were the benefit of the residents. Um, you found ways with the, the mail, the box, the, et cetera. You just found ways to, um, to make it happen. And, um, eternally indebted to both of you. Thank you. Okay. So now the third and final time to open it to the public. And Kristen, if you're still on, let's see, are you there? Oh, there you are. Great. So, um, I'd like to address some of your, your, your questions and thank you to everyone who's here and who interested, et cetera. Um, we, we appreciate it. We, we're, we're serving you. Um, and it's, you know, it's one thing when there's no one here. We'd rather have it packed, whether in person or, or on, on, on video. So we appreciate you being here. If you have questions, now is an appropriate time. Anytime in between, call me, email me, text me, any of the council members, call Borough Hall. Um, we are as transparent as possible and we, we are here to serve you. So, um, and I was going to defer some of this to Amy, who can speak to, to what's been going on in the timeline. And, and Amy has really been spearheading this and she's been doing a wonderful job. And every meeting she speaks to on her, her, her report is 220, 230. So Amy, do you recall the question? Do you want Chris, Kristen to ask the question again?
No, I think you're, you're, you know, just kind of talking about overall what's going on and, and the timeline and how we're moving forward. So, um, as Ari said, I have been reporting on it, you know, at every meeting. It is, it's, you know, a very, very complicated project. We have the municipal part of it. You have the, um, the residential part of it with fair share housing, and then you have the industrial part of it. And each one of those components is complicated in itself. And when I say this has been a roller coaster, um, it has been. And there's just been things that have been brought up, for example, like that fair housing law. That was in the contract initially. Nobody, you know, told us that there was this obscure law that there, we wouldn't, we weren't able to have the senior, you know, uh, housing. So we were, you know, had to go back through that. We also had changes with our, uh, fair share housing, not the numbers, but the configuration. We had to make one very low. So then we had to work out things with our fair share housing plan. Um, and then we also had an environmental issue, which some we knew about and some we didn't know about. So that is, uh, a whole delineation and a whole process that we had to go through. So we had to hire an environmental expert. Um, as you know, when we bought the property, we did a preliminary assessment, a phase one and a phase two. And that's, you know, basically what you're required to do when you buy a piece of property like this. So there was some things we knew about, like I said, and some things that we didn't know about. So we are actually, um, on the road now to, are fully delineated what we have to do to get the property cleaned up. We have a plan. Um, at our last meeting on June 11th, we actually authorized to go to bid, uh, for the cleanup. Uh, we're hoping to get the bid specs out actually next week. And then once the bid specs are out, we will have to sign the purchase and sale. We still actually don't have our agreement signed. So not only do we have to have the agreement signed, the due diligence, all of these documents that go with it still have to be signed and some of them have to be worked through. The purchase and sale, we were hoping to have on the docket for tonight, but something else came up that we, we couldn't have it. So it, uh, we're, we're planning on having the, the person's sale on for, um, the next meeting. And I think it's, uh, the 23rd, um, or maybe two meetings from now.
So Amy, I just, I just want to clarify one thing that you had said in terms of our due diligence, the due diligence is done. So, um, the, the, that, they have done that. Right?
Well, the due diligence is as far as, right, but there's still the ancillary documents, I should say. So the ancillary documents are kind of part of the whole, the whole package, um, that we have to do. The due diligence is right. The, that was part of the environmental stuff. So we're still, we're in the process of that. Um, so after.
And Amy, so, and just I want to dovetail into what Erica said and perhaps to, um, what Kristen may have alluded to in terms of how the deal has changed, et cetera. It will come, when we get there, um, when they, uh, sign contract and they'll make applications, they will come to the land use board. It'll be noticed that what they're planning on doing will be put to, to the public and there will be opportunity for, for everyone to, to be heard. So that's not done in closed session. That has not been done. That has not, that has not occurred yet. So Kristen, so I, I want to, I want to make sure that, that we're, that we're not just speaking, we're responsive to your questions. So what else do you have?
Okay. So can you just, so that when the minutes are, um, put up on the website, I'd like to go back and read Amy's report that explains, or listen to Amy's report that explains about the fair share, uh, senior ordinance, whatever change that was. Because we did put in so much time as a team, going to different senior facilities locally and trying. put in so much time as a team, going to different senior facilities locally, and trying to come up with ways to advocate for the senior population in this town, and now it sounds like they're getting zilch. So I just wanna read about, like, when did we know about that, and why was that not communicated, at least to the team who worked on it?
We still plan on doing a community center, so it's not necessarily they're getting zilch, it's, it's just unfortunately not, not the, the housing part of it. But the senior center is still, it's still very viable, and we still plan on going through with that.
Okay, thank you. And approximately, when did we learn about that fair share ordinance?
Uh, what would you say, Ray, about two, maybe two months ago?
Yeah, sometime, I would say in the spring, and that was the point in time, and I forget whether it was you or the mayor that referenced, that we brought in, that the borough brought in a specialist in, in that type of a housing issue to ascertain whether there was any workaround that was feasible. You know, it was clear that the desire of the governing body in the entire borough to try to preserve that component, you know, it came out of your planning committee, I think everybody was on board to that issue. But when we saw that there was a potential problem, the borough did authorize engaging special counsel on that, to see if there was any possible way to salvage that element, and the opinion that was received, and again, I think it was, it was during the spring, was that there was no way to do a workaround.
And Kristin, I can assure you that all of us feel very much the same way, a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of care put into that, and so I, 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 believe me, it's, it's, it's unfortunate, but there are these obscure federal things, and, and we did, that's why we, you know, brought an expert in to say, is there any way? And it, so I, I hear you, though, believe me, I know you spent a lot of time, and we've all spent a lot of time, and the seniors are and will continue to be important.
Right, thank you. Also, the other question I had, it was regarding the timing for the, for this land use board. You said that application is gonna be made to the land use board, so that then we could hear about this traffic study. I'm sure a lot of people are very concerned about how that's gonna change if you're increasing the number of units to 70 units, and they're not really gonna be single senior people anymore. We could be having families with more children for the schools, more traffic in the morning on that corner. I just, I feel like I would like to know what the dates are, so that we can start planning...
Yeah, so I was continuing the, the timeline, so to continue the timeline, we're hoping that actually at the, in September, we're going to be able to close on the property, and then they have to get their plans to the planning board. So it's gonna be most likely in the fall, and then, once we do this whole municipal building that we're going to do, that's a whole other set of plans that we have to work out. So that's gonna be, you know, the, the final approval process will be going back and forth with the maximum price and things like that, getting all the details added into that. So we're hoping, you know, by this fall, and it'll definitely be, you know, more transparent. Liz and I started putting minutes on a separate section on the website, and since we, you know, got caught up with a lot of these different issues that came up, we, we have stopped, but we plan on actually putting them, putting them back up very shortly. So there'll be a separate section on the borough website just for 2020-230 notes.
That sounds really good, thank you, Amy. And is it still the plan of the administration to use the revenue from the pilot payment from Hampshire to not increase the residents' taxes? Because I know that was one sticky point.
Mm-hmm. The, the pilot will, will more than, than cover it. The pilot will not be, well, this whole entire project is not raising the taxes of residents.
Okay, good. Okay, great. And then Amy, just a side note on Crestwood Park, there is a broken split rail fence at the playground, so I don't know if that can get fixed soon, but just to let you know. I saw it yesterday.
The grant actually that we put on, that we had today, is actually for new playground equipment as well as the fence. So we're hoping to get that done this season.
Okay, thank you.
We have the money and the budget to do that, so, yeah, we're just gonna start meeting with a contractor and have a pre-con meeting probably in the next couple weeks.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Kristin. Anyone else wish to be heard? Erica, again?
Yes, a couple of questions. I was wondering, when you found out a couple months ago about the change, was there any thought process or dialogue about maybe having a 55 and older community, which would then cut down on the stress that would occur in the school districts and possibly the traffic? Was there any discussion about that as a possibility?
No, you know, we really didn't. I mean, this was, we, we were trying to keep the, you know, the deal with this, you know, this developer. I mean, I think that would have been a whole other, different avenue to go down, but that wasn't something that, that was considered. That would be the whole, the whole entire development would have to be 55 and over.
Right, and has this developer ever had 55 and older developments?
Has the developer itself?
It created a community.
I'm not sure, possibly, I'm not sure, though.
Not sure.
Would that be something that could be entertained?
I think it's, I don't think so. I think that's, I think we're, you know, we're pretty far in the process. It wasn't something that we had, you know, on the table in the first place. So at this point, where, you know, we have our purchase and sale, we've been working, you know, for this deal for, you know, two years now, so it's, it's not something I don't think we can go back to.
And, and I think that one of the important aspects for the borough, and I think this was just mentioned before, was making sure that the economics of the deal were not impactful on the taxes of the residents.
Right.
So, so the resultant mix of the, the commercial unit, the increase of the residential units from 60 to 70, and maintaining the municipal facility, were all part of a workout that allowed the underlying economics to remain in place. So I think it would, you know, it would not be feasible at, at all in an economic sense to renegotiate that aspect.
Right, I would agree.
Okay, and then another, just another thought was, with regards to the, I guess about 25% of the community that has not responded to the census?
Yes.
Have you thought about maybe sending out a swift reach, encouraging people to fill that out?
I don't think a swift reach, I don't, that would, that's not, when I use swift reach for anything that comes close to the line, people always chastise me, and they say, isn't that only for emergencies? So, but I did report for four Fridays in a row, my video, we talked about the census. I've mentioned it, the last meeting, we've, I think we posted on Facebook, so I'm not going, I don't think it's appropriate for swift reach, but I, we tried to get the word out as much as possible, and I think in the middle of July, they start to knock on doors.
Census Bureau will be following up.
Yeah, the Census Bureau will be following up. If that doesn't get, if that's not enough incentive to fill out your census, I don't know what is.
Okay, it was just a thought.
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Tom, Mr. Zambrotta?
Yes, good, thank you. Tom Zambrotta, 13th century lady. I just had two follow-up questions for topics that came up over to the work session and to work during this session. One is, I, I understand the, some of the economic changes that are driving the, the mixture change in the Crescent development, and in hearing that, I just wanna, I have a follow-up question. So if there's an increase in residential units, that, that therefore, without increasing space, right, there, there's a decrease in the commercial element, which to my mind speaks to, you know, recognizing the softness in commercial real estate in the current economic environment. Not being able to forecast the future economic environment with any certainty for anyone today, oh, you know, are there any thoughts to creating plans for any other adverse tenancy softness or, you know, revenue softness that comes out of the future through that project? You're leaning in, was I not clear?
If you were, I, my apologies, maybe I just didn't get it. So I can hear it enough to be able to understand. Amy, did you hear it?
Well, the, I think you were talking about the, the commercial piece in the back, so it switched from self-storage to warehouse, and the self-storage market is actually saturated, that was the reason for that. And I'm not sure I was clear on your second question.
Well, if, if there's a, if there's a switch in the percentage of the development that's moved to residential from commercial, you know, part of that, in my mind, I start to hear that there's a softness in the commercial real estate marketplace. And I, I don't know that definitively, but that's likely what I've been hearing from many of my commercial friends. Is there any process in place to think about potential ongoing commercial softness that might impact tenancy there, or revenues coming out of that?
If I may, I, I think that that was a risk that the developer factored into the, the resultant proposal. So, so whereas the, the initial proposal was that it would be for, for storage facility, the notion was that in today's market, there is a, I guess, a more of a return on investment in terms of the warehouse facility. So I, I think within the parameters of the deal, the current economics have been factored in.
Right.
That's not to say that a, a subsequent conversion, I guess to your question, of what is going to be warehouse space to a storage facility at a later date, would, that would also be a permissible use within the zoning in that district. So, so there is some flexibility there for the future owner of the site to address within the context of our zoning, because obviously, and I think this point was made before, one of the features that the borough insisted on was making sure that under any permissible development, truck traffic was gonna be limited, so as to not intensify the use. So I think there is a little bit of flexibility built into the underlying zoning, but right now, the real estate market is such that it apparently favors light warehouse use over self-storage.
Okay, great, that's helpful, thank you. And then a second, totally unrelated question, but, you know, Liz had given us a water update, and, you know, spoke quite clearly on the need for us to, you know, go to the second tier of water restrictions.
Right.
So one of the questions that, that brings in my mind is, as, as demand increases, and, and we stress water supplies more intensely, water pressure risks dropping, and is there a risk of sediment being drawn into lines, which has happened in the past? Is there, is any concern about that at this point?
So, so I can say, I talk to Suez daily now, as well as Lane Simon and Ron Kistner from, you know, our DPW, as Ron is the Director of Operations. We're in constant communication with Suez, who operates, operates and maintains, but that is it. We are, not, not the sediment part, but we wanna make sure that levels do not drop to a place where we would either have a pump failure, or have lower pressure, or something like that. So we are absolutely keeping on it. I can tell you, the levels of the tank at Fairhaven, how many feet it goes down, what time, but it is, and that's, you know, it's important that we do keep monitoring that. So, and that's the reason why I've asked that people be, you know, their own best friend in saying, be kind to everybody, and, and try to follow these water restrictions, because, you know, with the wells are just, you know, the aqua four for everybody is down, but I can assure you that Suez is constantly monitoring it, and if we need to go to, you know, the next level of restrictions, we will, and it will probably be done the same way as it was done the last time, where you may get a call the day before and saying, please adjust your sprinkler settings, because that's really the largest draw, is, you know, everybody waters their yards, and many people have eight or 10 zones, and it can take several hours. And so that is, that's, that's the biggest challenge to our water system. So I'm gonna say thank you for asking, so I can, you know, say again, please just voluntarily make sure you're checking your sprinkler systems. And I have a whole bunch of other water tips, if anybody wants them at any time on conserving water.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Anyone else? Public comment?
Hi, Jackie McSwigan, 70, Greenway in Allendale.
Hi, Jackie.
I just wanted, I just wanted to take a minute to just send a shout out to Ron Kistner and his team, and to Michelle. Ron has been a tremendous help in getting the library up and running. He was a wonderful, you know, advocate for trying to get the right amount of the PPE that we needed, and get the, get all the Plexiglas up, and help us with the book drop. He's been terrific, and I just wanted, on behalf of the library board, to thank him for, and, and his team for all of his efforts. And also Patty Dursso, she's done a terrific job. Right now, we're in the phase of porch pickup, where you can order materials and then just come to the library and pick them up. There is a, a task force that's working on actually the, the opening of the library, which we hope to have in the coming weeks. So thank you, Ron, and your team.
Thank you, Jackie.
It shows how much those guys all do, because we all thank them. I mean, there's Plexiglas up at Crestwood, it's up at the Borough Hall, it's in the library, like, all those things getting ordered and cleaned, it's, it's amazing how much the team has accomplished.
Agreed.
True.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Yes, my husband, Alex Sarnes, is trying to make a comment, but he can't, so I just was wondering, I'm not gonna say what his comment was, but is there a limit to the number of people able to access this app, or is it just, maybe just a random fail on the app's side? He's been logging out and trying to get back in.
250. Kristin, the limit's 250 people.
So it's not that. I don't know why he can't get in, but he can't.
Actually, I see his name.
I know, he's been going out and coming back, trying to, you know, he's not at home, that's why he's trying to do it.
Okay, so, nope, it, it's not that, so, but we're thrilled to see everyone here, and if you wanna ask his question for him, you're, you're more than, you know, we'd be happy to hear it and listen and try to respond.
That's okay, I think you've heard enough of my screechy voice tonight.
Always a pleasure. Hopefully soon, we'll see you in person. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Hi, it's Yolanda Caffiero, I live at 100 Elbrook Drive.
Hello, and, and thank you. And I, I know you had sent me one of the, the, the jump in the number, so I, I hope, I hope I was able to be, be responsive to, to that.
Yes, thank you, that was much appreciated that you could explain that. I just wanted to publicly thank Liz Holman and Amy for their extremely, like, help for everything that they've done for Alleyoop and getting that up and running with the town. I mean, they were constantly answering emails, including on Father's Day weekend, like, I just, the whole board would just like to publicly acknowledge how hardworking they were.
Thank you, Yolanda.
Thank you.
It's our pleasure.
It is.
Thank you.
You guys do great work, it's great, on every level, for the kids, everything, so thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thanks so much. Anyone else wish to be heard? Not hearing or seeing anyone? I would close the meeting to the public, and I would request a motion to adjourn the regular session.
So much.
Holman?
Second?
Second, Stroch.
Great, thanks, Jim. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Everyone, thank you so much for your participation and for coming out, we appreciate it. The meeting's over.
Good night, all.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.